Eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. We'll let the roll call stand as previously called for the EDA meeting just before this. There have been no changes to attendees. Once again, we have our now changing hats, city attorney with us, standing in for Ms. Tierney, who's not with us this evening, Peter McHale, and also our city manager, Pat Trudgen, once again joining us. We did do the pledge of allegiance with the EDA meeting, so we'll not repeat that for the council meeting. Next then on our agenda for the council meeting would be approval of tonight's agenda, and I'll just double check with staff if there are any changes from a staff perspective.
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any changes from a council perspective? It's a fairly light agenda this evening. No changes?
No changes.
All right. With that then, a motion to approve tonight's council agenda would be in order.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Schroder. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Overall call.
Oh, roll call. Mr. Trudgen, thank you.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn?
Aye.
Councilmember Schroder?
Aye.
Councilmember Eton?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. Thanks for catching me on that. That passes unanimously. We have our agenda for this evening. Now we'll do general public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to items that are not on this evening's agenda, but may be of interest to people in the city or related to city business. We do provide an opportunity for public comment on agenda items as they come up, but we also do want at each meeting provide that early opportunity for members of the public to speak on general matters. I'll check with the public. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak under general public comment? Does not appear to be the case. We don't have anyone participating online?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Then we'll move on with the rest of our agenda. This evening, we have one item under recognitions and donations, and that is to proclaim Constitution Week, which has already begun, and we apologize to the folks at the Daughters American Revolution who usually collect our Constitution Week proclamation. We're a little behind this time around, but we'll do better next year. I'll read the proclamation, and then a motion to approve would be in order. The proclamation reads, "Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three marks the two-hundred-and-thirty-sixth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law nineteen fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September seventeenth through twenty-three as Constitution Week, now therefore be resolved, the City of Roseville hereby declares September seventeenth through twenty-third to be Constitution Week in the City of Roseville and urges all citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution that they had in seventeen-eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that any lost rights may never be regained." Is there a motion?
Moved. I moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Schroder, second by Councilmember Strawn. Any discussion on the motion to approve the Constitution Week recognition proclamation? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Trudgen.
Councilmember Graff?
Aye.
Councilmember Strawn?
Aye.
Councilmember Schroder?
Aye.
Councilmember Eton?
Aye.
Mayor Rowe?
Aye. That motion passes unanimously. That proclamation is approved, and we'll get a copy to the DAR shortly. That brings us then to our business items this evening. We have two business items. The first item is to receive recommendations from our finance commission related to the twenty-twenty-four proposed city manager budget and tax levy, as well as the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-fourty-three capital improvement program. We have the chair of the commission with us this evening, Ms. Davies, and welcome you to the table here, and look forward to hearing from the commission as to the recommendations that you have. Welcome.
Well, as you saw in your packet, we recommended approval of the budget as submitted by the city manager and finance director. Like everybody here, we probably wish there would have been a lower increase in the levy, but acknowledging that last year reserves were used and so forth to keep up the tax increase.
Someone can't hear in the background.
I think the mic is not quite direct.
Oh, okay. Sorry. So anyway, just to repeat, we did approve the budget as submitted by the city manager. We would wish that it was a lower levy increase, but don't really see any place that would be appropriate to cut from that budget, and there's some... Something to be made up from last year from the lower increase. So it remains to be seen, of course, what happens with the compensation study, which hopefully will be available pretty soon, and we'll give a firmer estimate of what compensation costs would be then in twenty twenty-four. So it's kind of an unusual year that we don't have that level of certainty that we would usually have. So hopefully that half a million dollars that's in there to fund whatever might come out of that study will be adequate, and maybe we'll even be lucky, and it'll be more than necessary. So... And then we also approved the capital improvement plan program as proposed. We are going to be taking a look at the vehicle purchase schedules. Everybody knows that costs of vehicles and both new and used have changed dramatically in the last few years, and so it just seems like it's time to take a look at how long the city is keeping the vehicles and whether that's still the most cost-effective way forward. So hopefully we'll have that in place for next year's capital improvement plan. So are there... I don't know if you have any questions for me?
Questions from the council? Councilmember Schroder?
Thank you for being here tonight and all the work that you and your commission do. My question is, when that compensation study comes out, will you revisit the budget to see if your recommendation changes?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's... I don't know if there's an update on when you're expecting to get that.
Yes, and I think we would all agree that sooner the better. So we have received some preliminary information Friday afternoon. We're still going through that. I am going to try the best we can to capture the rough amounts we need for next Monday, but we expect to have the full compensation and compensation plan presented to the council on October ninth. So it's very likely even at the not-to- exceed, we're not going to have some good numbers for you to make a decision on, and we're going to have to use the remaining fall time period up to the final budget process to look at what that number should be. It's going to depend on the implementation, and we have several contracts open this year for police and fire, so there's a lot of variability on that. And my two cents, and we can talk about this next week, I guess, but my sense is that we need to make sure we have adequate resources dedicated at this point to potentially deal with that, and then really roll up the sleeves after the twenty-fifth to really look at where we can reduce it. My goal is to reduce it as well, but we'll have to see what kind of comes out of that study. So if anything, I would ask you for patience as we continue to work that. We want to make sure what we present to you is correct, and just looking at the myriad of spreadsheets and different options, there are some things we're catching from the consultant that we're going back and forth with to make sure we have correct information. So at some point, we will have it, not by next Monday in detail, but October ninth is when we're planning to present that. Then look for the council to make some decision on how to implement that by the end of October. The reason being is that we need to, whatever we end up doing, need to start implementing into our system so we can be ready to roll at the start of the year. So I expect by the end of October, we should have a really good handle, if not by mid-October, on what those costs would be, and then we can plan a quarterly. And then, as you know, at the last meeting of the year, December fifth, when you approve the final levy and budget, that's where you can make decisions and certainly can lower it. You can't increase it, but that's not what we're looking to do. We're looking to lower it.
So that time schedule would work well with, you know, our regularly scheduled October meeting, which would be the tenth?
Yeah, following night, yes.
Yeah. So we should have some better information, and we would be taking a look at that then.
And that would be on your agenda.
Yeah, that would be our agenda in October.
Thank you.
Other questions or feedback from the council to the commission?
I'd just say, you know, I always appreciate the minutes from your meetings that bring different people, bring up different things which are important, and makes me think about the process differently sometimes, so just pass that along. I appreciate that information.
Well, thank you.
I would echo that. The minutes were exceptionally helpful in reading through people's thought processes and what got them to that, and it was just, again, a variety of voices make it really helpful to have a really sound discussion that is, kind of covers all the bases. Thank you.
I'll echo that, and just note a couple of things. I'm glad that Councilmember Schroder brought up the compensation study and the process of going through that, and I appreciate that the commission is going to have that on their agenda for the tenth. I think that that's entirely appropriate, and to the extent that the commission, through this process and reviewing the study and the results, has any recommendations to the council as to implementation and how to accomplish that in the best interests of the citizens as well as the employees, I think would be welcome... That would be welcome by the council and staff, so we want to encourage that. The other piece you mentioned was the vehicle replacement, and I'm glad you're taking a look at that as well. Certainly, things are, you know, lasting longer theoretically, although sort of there is built-in obsolescence everywhere, too, so it's...
Well, and purchase prices have skyrocketed as well, so that's the other piece of the equation that's changed significantly.
So it seems worthwhile, and I will certainly stand corrected by the council if I'm wrong in saying this, that one of the things that sort of being put forward to look at is the potential for an upcoming fire engine purchase to be an electric vehicle, and it would seem to make sense to perhaps charge the... Oh, no pun intended. Charge the commission with looking at that and doing a financial analysis or providing input to the financial analysis that we have and recommendation to the council, because I think that's something that we would benefit from more eyes looking at, and I know we've had a lot of, you know, eyes in the department looking at it, and I know we've had eyes on the council looking at it, but I think having the commission take a look at those finances would make sense, too.
Okay.
Because of the fact that there, you know, there can be payoffs, higher cost upfront, lower maintenance down the road. We just don't know where we're sitting with that right now, and you folks would be the perfect folks to take a look at that. So unless I'm wrong, council, that's certainly my recommendation.
Makes sense.
Okay. Anything else from the council in relation to finance and budget matters that we, now that we have the chair with us this evening, to carry our message back to the commission? All right. Well, thank you again for taking a look at these things and for being diligent in your review of city finances and recommendations to the council, and we look forward to your continuing involvement in the process as we move towards, as we careen towards that early December date when we adopt our final budget.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Next on our agenda, our second business item is to receive information related to the Highway Thirty-Six transportation study that was recently undertaken, or perhaps still ongoing, maybe anyway, and more on that from the representatives from MINDOT.
Well, Jennifer Lowry, our Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer, introduce the topic, and just getting the presentation queued up, so...
Right. There we go. I just didn't want to assume that somebody was going to be doing something if they weren't... If Ms. Lowry had not intended to make an introduction, I didn't want her to be on the spot.
No. I had to get involved in my first work session, so...
Welcome.
So mayor council members, we have David Elvin from MINDOT Metro District. He is the Long Range Planning Director. MINDOT's team has done a great job engaging the public and the various agencies, and has been gathering and analyzing data like crazy so far. So they're just wrapping up Phase One, which results in the purpose and need. Roseville does have staff that are serving on the project management team, and I'll leave the rest to David to run through it.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So thank you. Yes, my name is David Elvin. I work over in the Big Silver Building, which is our metro district headquarters. I'm a transportation planner, so I don't actually build things, but that's kind of appropriate. It's... We're here tonight to talk about something we don't usually do at MINDOT. We're going to talk about the future without a specific project in mind. We are anticipating a lot of new federal money. You are, I'm sure, are aware of all the IIJA money that is coming Minnesota's way, and our own legislature this last year has also put a lot of money toward infrastructure in the state, and so MINDOT is realizing we need to do more planning so that the projects we do with this money make sense and meet our needs. And so this study is about identifying those needs, and I'll share what we've found so far, and then moving toward some ideas generally for a twenty, you know, a twenty-twenty-five-year horizon. So not a specific project tonight, but looking long-term. And I just want to say thank you to Jennifer. She is... We have a project management team that meets every month, and she reads everything, which not everybody on the team does, and you provide great comments, and I really appreciate that.
Thanks. I try. I wouldn't say every word, but I try.
You do very well. So this is our study area, starting at thirty-five W in the west. We stop before we get into that intersection, and then we head east about eight miles all the way to the Bruce Vento Bridge that goes across Highway Thirty-Six just after Edgerton. I think Edgerton is right. No, it's English. Thank you. So an eight-mile corridor with three municipalities. Roseville has probably the most real estate and the most trip generators in this study area. Sixty-two thousand residents. We have at least that many, probably more, passing through the study area on Highway Thirty-Six every day, just for comparison. And then seventeen thousand jobs in the study area, a lot of them concentrated within Roseville. Here's our trip volumes from when we started the study last fall. So these are counts, so post-COVID theoretically. This is probably somewhat close to reality these days. It's been very hard to do traffic counting and forecasting these last couple of years, as I'm sure you can imagine.
Are these counts per year, per day?
This is per day.
Per day.
AADT, average daily trips. Yeah. I don't...
An extra A.
I'm not great with my acronyms, but these are the number of cars and trucks, and I don't know if we have the data along here, but trucks are very important to this picture. Trucks are usually between three and five percent of that total number. Very important in this area, providing access to some of the commercial, to the mall, of course. I love this graphic because it illustrates what we're trying to do with this study, which is understand how we can better and more efficiently move people along Highway Thirty-Six east-west, but also help them get over.
Right.
And so that's where you see the people going over. In the study area, we have thirteen crossings of Highway Thirty-Six, and you'll see the data later on, but there are three times as many people crossing Highway Thirty-Six as there are traveling along it. Some of those crossings, as you may know, Snelling Avenue, are not up to standard. There's no sidewalk there. That's one of the big reasons we're doing this study now. So understanding the needs is where we're at now. We're kind of wrapping up that phase. We're in September twenty twenty-three, coming up with what we call the purpose and need, understanding why are we doing this? Then hopefully we will have a good understanding that will move us toward alternatives, and in this case, alternatives means big-picture concepts for the entire corridor, what kinds of projects make sense together. We're now developing that. Tomorrow, we have a PMT meeting... No, Wednesday, we have a PMT meeting in which we're going to see the first round of alternatives. There'll be about half a dozen or so, ranging from adding a lane to adding transit to doing nothing, and we'll use our technical information to evaluate it. We'll do more public engagement on it, wrap that up probably in February of twenty twenty-four, and then a final document that we will bring back out, and that will serve as our reference for how we go forward for pursuing some of that money, who are the partners that will be involved in doing those projects. Hopefully, we'll have a clear roadmap and a vision, so that's what this study is about. These are our partners who are involved in our project management team, so the county is there, Met Council is there, the three municipalities, and Metro Transit. Metro Transit did a study maybe eight years ago now, looking at... This is before I was with MINDOT. I've been there five years, looking at possible transit service along Highway Thirty-Six. That's one of the reasons we want to come back to that. You probably also know Ramsey County is doing a all-abilities plan. It's happening at about the same time, but I just wanted to call it out. It's different from this study. We're looking only at the Highway Thirty-Six corridor. Ramsey County's plan is looking at the entire county, but with a similar interest in all modes, not just cars, understanding that there are opportunities for reducing trips, making things more convenient for people who need... You know, shorter trips can be accomplished without cars, understanding how we can do that. So the city is working on that plan as we work on ours. Again, some of the background for why this study's happening. The comprehensive plans of Roseville and the other cities all talk about reducing vehicle miles traveled, doing a better job with transportation supporting land use. MINDOT did a study twenty eighteen that looked at a managed lane, EZ Pass now, adding one or two of those. We never really followed through, I think, with evaluating that and understanding is that something that could meet our needs, help reduce our congestion out there. Ramsey County has a bike barriers analysis. They're concerned about the crossings, a couple of them in Roseville. Washington County has a plan. They would like to be able to get people from Stillwater to downtown Minneapolis. Metro Transit has its own study, how to get people from Oakdale to downtown Minneapolis, and then the Purple Line, which is now being reevaluated. It was originally going to cross Highway Thirty-Six on Bruce Vento Trail. We're now... I think they are now looking at a crossing on White Bear Avenue, so it might just be out of our study area. But there's a lot going on in this study area. Part of what we did with this study is to look at your comprehensive plan in an effort to make sure that these alternatives are consistent with what this community is envisioning for its future, and one of the interesting things is a change in land use opportunities for the transition to mixed use at both of the malls, the Har Mar and Rosedale. And if we... These are... I'm not sure this is going to be the greatest transition. Let's see if it works. They are... These are kind of the segments of the corridor where we expect to see commercial uses, mainly mall uses, rezoned within coming years. It may already have happened in Rosedale, I'm not sure, to mixed use. And so there's a different set of calculations for forecasting future traffic volumes, understanding what kinds of trips are needed by the people who need to get to and from a mixed-use type of facility. So these are some kind of big changes. The transportation goals from your plan that are really relevant here are the crossings. We are seeing congestion there in addition to on the main line, so Roseville's looking for some strategic improvements on how we get across. I mentioned the Snelling Avenue, lack of a crossing, lack of a sidewalk, lack of a bike lane right now. That one really hurts me because my office is right there. The irony of MINDOT, my desk is within view of a non-compliant bridge crossing, so I take this study very personally. So that connecting Rosedale, also the mall connection to the residential area, there's a residential area kind of in that southwest quadrant of the Snelling and Thirty-Six area. I see people walking across Thirty-Six frequently, needing to get over to Target or Har Mar. We need to improve the facility for everybody. And again, we alluded to freight access, but that's very important. A lot of our roads were built before large trucks dominated, and we needed to have a large turning radii. We need to make sure that the turning radii in particular allow trucks to safely navigate the turns to get in and be able to service mall or industrial facilities without going over curbs, without impinging on bike and ped facilities. And then the other thing from the Roseville plan is the extension of the A-line, the Bus Rapid Transit Service that currently comes up Snelling and terminates at the mall. There's discussion about extending that north, I think, up Snelling to Arden Hills, and so we want to see how we can help support that. I find this chart interesting. It shows concentration of jobs that pay less than twelve fifty a month, and that's a threshold at which people may be car-sharing, may be riding their bikes, may be walking, may be taking transit to work. And so Rice Street and Rosedale and Har Mar areas are where we see a need for alternate transportation, not just motor vehicles. So it's kind of a summary of our philosophy and approach to what we're going to be doing here. We're looking at all transportation users, trying to create an interconnected system, close some of those gaps where we know we have needs, look at EZ Pass as a way of managing congestion and improving operations on Thirty-Six, keeping our resurfacing, resurfacing of the road. That's a big, important task for MINDOT. We need to make sure our existing facilities remain safe and don't get... Don't go too far gone, because it costs a lot more to repair a road if you let it go. So... And then the third column, they're talking about equity. If you can't afford a car, you still need to be able to get to work or the doctor or to go shopping, and that is really an underlying philosophy of this study, but something MINDOT is realizing more, I think, just in the last few years. And so doing a better job of planning for all people. It's in our state statute. It's our first responsibility is to provide a safe transportation facility for everybody, not just motor vehicle drivers, and so kind of our underlying philosophy there. You can see we have a number of locations, and many of them are in Roseville, that are not safe, and I'm going to... I don't want to move away from my microphone, but we have what we call the critical crash rate, which is... It's a little different from being above average, but it's more crashes than you would expect, it's more crashes than are acceptable, and we have locations... The bright red are those where we have fatal pedestrian bicycle crashes or motor vehicle crashes. You can see at just about every crossing, this is data from the most recent five years, rates that are above what MINDOT considers acceptable and what pushed this corridor into one of what we consider a safety need. A lot of the crashes are happening on the ramps. We have some weird geometry at some of these ramps. I don't have to tell you about Hamlin Avenue. Why is that that way? So...
Why did they make it that way again?
Really? Was... That wasn't the first go-around?
No, it just happened this summer.
Well, they did was say that was just a signal interception.
Oh, right, right.
To make it exactly the same.
Yeah. And so safety is an important measure for this study. If we zoom in to the... This is the west end of the corridor. You can see a little bit more detail where those accidents are occurring. We're working with the county and I think the city on a new improvement at Snelling and County Road B. That's a project that's going separately from our work, but this gives you a sense that the ramps are where we have a lot of our problems. If we go to our operational levels for the entire corridor, level of service F, this is from twenty twenty-two when we took our most recent counts, level of service F, as you might imagine, is bad, but it still means traffic is moving. But it still means traffic is moving. And so you see the top map shows the westbound in the morning. And we're seeing some, some congestion in, in, within Roseville. Still not, and when you're in it, it, you can be, it feels like stop and go. But when we average compared to some of our other corridors, this is about par for the course, maybe even a little better. So we do have a congestion problem in our, our public engagement verified that people really perceive a congestion problem out there. The data doesn't necessarily show that it's that severe. For about, this is peak hour, for about eighteen hours a day, there's no problem. So it can be a matter of how do we get this resource to operate, to spread the demand out and help it operate a little more efficiently all throughout the day. Access management is another important aspect of this study. We have more than desirable number of accesses. You on a urban freeway probably want to have your interchanges every mile or so with, with a limited access facility like Highway thirty-six. And there are locations in the mall area where we have them every half mile. And sometimes that feels convenient, but it creates more conflict points, creates more ramps where people are transitioning from being a sixty mile an hour car on the highway to needing to be a twenty-five or thirty mile an hour car on a city street. And reducing the number of places where that happens, improving the efficiency of circulation on the, on the county roads that are parallel is something we're looking at. Also, some of the, the high risk analysis that we've done is showing that most of these crossings that are too close are the ones where we're having the higher risk to pedestrians. And then we also, of all the thirteen, I think it's thirteen crossings, we only have four with proper bike lane facilities. This is, hopefully I won't go through this too much, but this is how we evaluate that risk. So we're looking to see, these are the intersections within Roseville only. I snipped those out. And so we're looking to see, is there a median where people could take refuge? Is the speed limit low or high? Low is better. Is it near a school? That's a higher risk. Is there a left turn with a protected signal cycle? That, that is a less risk. So our, our consultant went through every intersection and applied this criteria to understand where do we have the most risk? And you can see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine of the locations within Roseville. So this is kind of the, the reason we're having this conversation. We have high pedestrian and bicycle and non-driver generator, trip generators. The high school is right there. Lots of people every day needing to get across the highway. How are they doing it with, without a car or are they getting cars? And so understanding the rule of these major trip generators, the mall, of course, is the other big one that we're looking at, both malls. And there's the residential area up in the upper right quadrant here that I think the demographics show we have lower car ownership there. And so more people walking and biking in that area. This is our, our risk assessment. Kind of plotted geographically, a little easier to read than the, the chart we saw. But we've got some descriptors down underneath. So you can see under the, under Snelling Avenue, you see there are some bullets that explain why these are high risks. So Snelling, uncomfortable walking environment, there's no sidewalk. Crossing yielding, uncontrolled vehicle paths and ADA accessibility has not been brought up to standard yet. Sightlines and visibility, other things like that. So we, we are identifying problems that indicate there's a need for improvement for all types of travelers. I alluded earlier to the number of trips across this corridor. The left-hand column shows the number of motor vehicle trips that we are estimating. This is used, using cellphone data and some other big data information that we have access to. But you can see more, far more trips, remember the, the daily volume, the highest point was ninety thousand, I think. We've got two hundred and thirty-nine thousand vehicle trips at all the thirteen crossings. Snelling, of course, the, the highest demand compared to twenty-six hundred walking trips. But when you look at the proportion of people who are pedestrians who are having accidents, you're much likely to be severely injured or even killed if you're a pedestrian in an accident than you are in a motor vehicle. Same is true with bikes. We have even fewer bike crossings that may be a factor of the fact that we have fewer bike lane facilities on those crossings. We also have transit. And before and after people get on buses, they are pedestrians running around in intersections and doing all kinds of unpredictable things. And it is important that we provide a safe facility, a predictable facility to serve those people and to help transit operate more efficiently. The, the main lines here being the A-line coming up Snelling and then the, the sixty-five, which travels along County B and then goes south on Dale. So our engagement has involved a lot of people, agencies, groups. We've been very successful in our engagement by going to grocery stores. We reached more people in the Cub parking lot over at Rice Street than we did at our open house. The open house was a different kind of event. But I, I feel as though we've done a pretty good job. We've had more than three thousand written comments submitted so far, helping us when we are asking, what are your needs, what's not working for you? And a lot of these groups have been partners with us. We've had some paid partnerships with Mung organizations. And it's been rewarding in the sense that it's gotten us good data. Some of the things we've heard so far is that transit is important. There are a lot of people, especially in the Rice Street area, that are using public transportation. People driving are generally feeling safe. The main problems are the, the ramps. And on the main line, speeding, people are very upset. Heard it many times, that driver behavior is as much a concern as the physical facility itself. Not quite sure how to address that. And then looking for safer pedestrian crossings in all locations, but particularly those locations where we don't have them currently. Our engagement is also tugged at my heartstrings. We had a comment at our public meeting, we had a little comment table. And you can see in the upper right-hand corner here, Anna, a ninth grader from Roseville High School, said everyone should have a safe walk or bike to school. And I, I might be pandering, but I, it really just made me understand people who can't drive, our, 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 our school students and looking, looking for ways that they can be more safe in getting across the road. So in our engagement, our Cub supermarket parking lot endeavors and also an online survey, we were able to synthesize what people were telling us were the top needs. And so on a one to five scale, we identified traffic congestion as the main concern. That's what we were hearing most often. That's what people were writing down and clicking on the survey to tell us. And there, the number one, the number two problem they identify is ramp improvements. So that's a consistent theme throughout our identification of problems so far. People are looking for sidewalks, environmental improvements, bike lanes, and comfort and aesthetics. Some people would tell us, you know, people in, traveling in their cars are comfortable. They're warm in the winter, they're cool in the summer. It's, it's much more comfortable than it is walking or biking. And so to the extent we can provide some comfort to people walking and biking by providing them with separation from speeding traffic, some shelter from, from weather, that could help improve conditions for people not traveling in cars. So I think this is pretty close to the end here. We have synthesized this all and identified the major needs of this study. The major needs of what people have told us they would like to see in the future are safety for people traveling in vehicles, safety and mobility of people walking and biking, and then the mobility of people traveling in vehicles. So when we say mobility, we're talking about travel times mainly. This, so these are the, the three things we heard over and over again. These are the three reasons we need to have a vision for the future. This is just a quick summary of, of the engagement we've done so far. You are the ultimate, the last city council we've talked to in this first round. But I intend to be back probably early after the, the new year with some of the alternatives that we're developing, something visionary. You know, we're, we're working kind of at what we call sketch level. There's not going to be designs. But we'll be talking about number of lanes that could be added, different treatments we could use at some of the crossings. What, what accesses might we close to thirty-six to get better operation? And that, that will be coming up in the spring. And hopefully we'll have those alternatives finalized then by, you know, the spring of next year. So I'll be back in the winter. And with the time we have left, I guess I've, I've been doing most of the talking. But are there things I have missed or our study team has missed in your plans or your knowledge or what you hear from people in your community about how thirty, Highway thirty-six is affecting their lives? City staff, I'm sure hear a lot of input from people about local transportation needs. And anybody else we ought to be talking to as part of this process?
Good, thank you. Feedback or questions from the council, Councilman Westrow?
Well, I think you should be talking to students at Roseville High School. I live right off of Hamlin and I don't go that way in the morning because of the buses and the students. There's enough people on that road anyway. But I feel that that walkway is really inferior along Hamlin. It switches from one side to the other side. There's not a very good crosswalk there. And then the sidewalk, especially on the east side, is very raised. So if you were on a bike or you were in another, I've seen wheelchairs go across that, I would be scared. It's very high from the ground and I, I just feel like there's no, there's no guardrail of any kind. It's very narrow. I think the biggest thing for me is just, it's so inconsistent. It's over here, it's over there. And if I, when I was biking with small children, I would always bike on the sidewalk. Well, there's a lot of people in the city who don't feel that's the appropriate place to be. But there is very little inconsistency or consistency. And I'd say that throughout this corridor, when I look at County B and County B two, I've tried to bike to my work in Minneapolis. I feel like I've been in a torture chamber. It, there's very little consistency, especially as you go west of Fairview on County B two. It, it is terrifying and I am an adult by myself. I would not allow a child to be going that way. And I feel that way about Hamlin. And if I think if there was one that you were going to close and it would be, a lot of people would be really upset with that. But it would be an opportunity to protect a lot of students who are walking to that facility, who are walking by Cedar Home. It's just a prime spot where kids are passing back and forth. I just wanted, my son was hit by a car on his bike at Lexington at the frontage road as it came off of there. And maybe there'd be a possibility of having a no turn on red at any of those points around there. It's just that people are paying attention to themselves and themselves alone.
Could you remind me the location again?
Headed to the east, coming the Lexington exit, going south. Well, I guess you could go north or south from that exit.
The right turn going south.
But he was going, yeah, to the right. And as he passed on a green, someone wasn't paying attention and, and hit him. And he wasn't seriously hurt, so that's maybe not the kind of thing that would get into your data. But I know another child who has been, whose bike was hit in that. And so as a parent, sending them to Edie Williams for band camp was terrifying and a no-go. You know, so I think, I think there's just a lot of trepidation on the part of parents who are allowing their children to go anywhere near there. But I'd say from B to B two, really in C, it's very inconsistent. And I'd say that would be the main thing. The other thing I'd like to, a couple of two things. My concern with the EZ Pass is that if there's any lane reduction, that it's going to push more cars into the neighborhoods. So it's going to push more cars onto B and B two. And then you're going to have even greater problems if you're trying to have those B access points for people who maybe don't have a car. And so I really, I think a really big consideration is if we're going to the HOV lanes, that we are making sure we're not reducing the amount of lanes that we have. And of course, HOV lanes are not geared to people who have economic needs. Those are geared toward the people who can pay the most can, can access that. So that is a struggle for me to see how that is an equitable resolution. And then I just want to say in our neighborhood at Lexington and Roseland, there is a large, relatively large wheelchair apartment building. And throughout the area, again, that inconsistency of access for bikes is even more pronounced for folks who are relying on a motorized wheelchair for their mobility. And so seeing that it's very inconsistent going across Roseland or even other points where it crosses. But I see from that, them from there to Target is a real frequent point. And they're coming up and down my street quite often. I live on Schreier. And so I just think that that's really important to make sure that it's not just about maybe recreation, but that this is their way to get around, like they don't have a way in the neighborhood unless we provide better access. And then I just think that there's an opportunity for connection with Ramsey County Means Business. And maybe you've operated with them before, but their job site is geared toward telling people how close they are to a transit line in locating jobs. And it's very underutilized. I wish it were more regularly utilized. But they're seeking to be an equity point for people who don't have access to regular transportation or a car, so to speak. And I think there's an opportunity for some collaboration that could be really positive for all parties to see, you know, if someone knew that they lived. I struggle with someone who drives twenty miles to get paid minimum wage if they can. They're going to get paid so poorly, maybe they can do it at the end of their block or, you know, two blocks away and not have to put into all that time and money in commuting or having access. So finding better ways to get our people in our neighborhoods to work in our neighborhoods, so.
That's great.
Better resources. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I was not aware of Ramsey County Means Business, so we may follow up with you to get a name or a contact there.
Sure. And if you just Google Ramsey County Means Business, that's the name of their website. And that's the same vendor who did our engagement process with our ARPA fund. So they, you know, I So they, you know, I, it's a great idea. It just needs to be more aware and, and better utilized.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you for telling me about your son as well. You know, I, I wasn't going to say it tonight, but I've been realizing, looking at the safety information, the way we do transportation planning here at MinDOT is by how many people are killed and hurt. That is not a great place to start your planning. We need to be thinking about our children, where they need to go, where we need to have access for our living. So I, I, I really am taking in what you say.
Thank you. I guess I just struggle as we make it big. It needs, I, I struggle to see how it's less busy in the afternoon. From two thirty on, it's a place to be avoided. If I can get across on Larpenter, I'm not going to get on thirty-six. But I think as it gets busier and busier, as people, it's a really popular and necessary thoroughfare. But it's going to get less and less friendly for families who live anywhere near it. It's already very, very loud. And so traffic barriers have been asked for by various residents. Like why don't we have a traffic barrier?
A noise barrier?
A noise barrier. Sorry. Yep. So just making sure that livability issues too. Because if we make it so usable for cars, we tend to make it less usable for people.
Other questions or feedback from council members? Councilmember Graff?
I, I would agree with many of those things. I live down in the southwest quadrant, south Highway thirty-sixth and west of Cleveland. So kind of on the end of things. So really walking and biking out of that area is difficult. We can go across thirty-six at, at Fairview.
Yeah.
But that is still pretty intense to get through there and then around the mall part. So, so most people are, are limited to cars. The noise is a high factor there in our, in our neighborhood. I would say the barrier for people getting across thirty-six is what I hear the most about from people, even with their cars and especially at holiday times because the traffic gets absolutely backed up on Fairview and, and thirty-six. You could wait for quite a while to get through there.
Councilmember Graff has a question. Okay, Councilmember Graff? Yeah, I was going to ask actually in the control room if we can bring up the meeting and the Zoom on the small monitor instead of the presentation. Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Atten?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Elvin, thank you for being here. I think this is really important. I, I agree with a lot of the comments made by the two council members so far. I think you really talked about, the, the, the high points you talked about in your feedback are things that certainly I've heard. But I think what, what my fellow council members are talking about and you mentioned, for folks here in Roseville, really time one of those two hundred forty-three thousand people trying to cross under and over thirty-six. And that's, that's where our community is feeling this very intensely. I use thirty-six every day, morning and many afternoons. And certainly that can be a problem for me, but it's not nearly the problem of transitioning north and south through a city. And when that is backed up on thirty-six, B and B two are deeply impacted. So we get into some of these discussions about intersections, sidewalks, great separated pathways for people on many, many of, or all of these roads. That, that I think we, that's something that for Roseville residents, that's what's most important. Improvements to thirty-six for cars is fine, but there are so many other needs that our residents are impacted by daily. That will involve working extensively with the county. Obviously you own Snelling and there, you identified some of the things at B. Kind of road C in Snelling is a failing intersection, another big one that we've, we, we can use support on. But I think it's Ramsey County working with MinDOT for the other things. An example is Ramsey County is looking at a four to three conversion for Dale Street.
That's right.
Next year, and I've been pushing for a great separated sidewalk along the east side where there are bus stops and things like that. Right now there's nowhere for people to stay out of the lane without standing in someone's yard on a hill. And that's, that's been a tough road to hope so far. But that sidewalk connects people, would connect people to north-south there. We've got Parkview. I noticed you had Parkview on your list. Parkview Center School is one of your engagement places. I would agree with Councilmember Strawn, Time Oak Ross, Roseville Area High School. But north of thirty-six on Dale Street, there are three schools within less than a half mile of that intersection. Two private schools and Central Park Elementary School. So we're talking about a ton of schools. We think about that intersection, thinking about how many people are right there who might be using or needing great separated trans, ability to bike and walk. So that's, that's my, my big message. We're thinking about that north-south connection, being able to bike and walk safely on all these roads. And then that B and B two piece. And I think you've mentioned these things. I just bring those up very specifically. I had one more thing, but let's see if I have any notes that are going to help me out. Oh, were you, does MinDOT not have a plan to at least do a resurfacing of a section of thirty-six next year?
I don't believe next year.
Probably within the next couple of years.
Yeah, I think it's about three years out.
Okay, well.
Maybe some of the federal money can, can move it ahead.
This Lowry will, maybe I'll, I'll talk to her later. But some of, some of thirty-six has greatly deteriorated as it goes through the eastern half of Roseville. Huge delamination issues both on the exit and entrance ramps at Dale Street, for example, as well as the main highway. So I hope that some of that is being dealt with sooner. As, as you talk about twenty, thirty years out, that stuff is severely degraded at this time. So I hope that this isn't just, you know, that far, but making sure that right now the road is safe to pass and not destructive to cars.
I'll follow up and get that information too, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Other council questions, feedback? Councilmember Strong?
I think most of my fellow council people have hit most of the points. That Dale Street ramp is really horrible. I, I get a lot of people, you know, talking to me about that.
Is it primarily the westbound?
Yes.
The head west?
It's really bad. And I, I do drive that fairly often and you're, you kind of figure out, you know, your dodge and everything to try to get up there, which isn't good. And then of course, the other one I hear a lot about is Snelling. And, you know, the, how unsafe that is. And of course, you know, like Councilman, and, and said that, that's, that's something we can out by ourselves deal with. And that's why having you work with all these other partners is going to be important to address some of those concerns as well. So thank you.
And I have a, a couple of things too. I wanted to make sure, so certainly one of the things we talked about in our plan was the, the A-line extension. I honestly don't know when or if that may ever happen. But we do know that we're going to get the G-line on Rice and Robert Street.
I forgot to mention.
Metro Transit is, is already in, in the works. I just looked at their website. They're talking about pending funding to start the project on, in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-seven timeframe. So certainly in the twenty-thirty year window, there is going to be, barring any unforeseen circumstances, you know, a, a major transit corridor on Rice Street as well. So I wanted to make sure and mention that. I fully concur with, you know, engagement with students. If that hasn't been done very much, definitely add that more into the mix. And parents, obviously. I think that one of the things, certainly that if they, if we're looking at improving Highway thirty-six in terms of how it functions, that can only benefit our, our residential people on B two and B. Because one of the big issues we hear about is every time there's, there's an accident or a problem on thirty-six, it just gets crazy on B two and B. And the problem that we have is that people try to drive like a freeway on roads that are not freeway roads, that have stop signs, that have intersections, that have pedestrians in close proximity. And we, and we get a lot of people impatient. We get a lot of people who aren't behaving like they might otherwise if they're driving through their neighborhood. The right turn on red is just a huge issue at every single exit off of thirty-six. People not looking for, let alone stopping for pedestrians. I mean, more and more these days, you know, not to get off on a rant, but I mean, people just aren't even stopping before they turn right on a red. And it is creating all kinds of potential danger in, not only in our community, but across, you know, the metro area. I do want to be candid and say, I think the city lobbied against closing the Hamlin interchange a few years ago when MinDOT was looking at that. So we may have to reevaluate our point of view on that, but we want to know what the pluses and minuses are. Certainly neighbors are concerned about access and I think that's something. And, and businesses as well. So we have to really understand if we're going to go to fewer interchanges to help with the accesses. You know, what, what are the impacts to the, the businesses and residents immediately adjacent there in terms of how they can still have good access and, and feel good about those changes? So that's going to be important. The, but that kind of gets to one of the things that's a theme that you mentioned, which is sort of the ramps and conflicts. Not only is there a ped and biker and vehicle conflict, but I think that every time there's an interchange, as, as I'm sure traffic planners well know, there are, especially like on a Cloverleaf interchange or some of the Hamlin access points, we've got people trying to exit from high freeway speeds onto a low speed, whether it's an exit ramp or eventually they have to stop theoretically at the end of the ramp. And people also trying to accelerate on. And I think that, that conflict manifests itself in my own commute many, many times, not just in this corridor, but it really makes me think about ways to improve the transition where people are both trying to exit off the highway. At the same time, you've got other people trying to get on, both of whom are in a hurry and tend not to make the decisions that would make it work better. You know, constantly you have people sort of staying at highway speed and then diving off at the last minute, slamming on the brakes to hit the exit, while you've got somebody coming up that's trying to, you know, get up to highway speed and they end up having somebody stopping essentially in, in front of them. And, you know, that's just, that's causing dangerous situations. So I want, you know, I want, I'm sure you're going to be focusing on that safety aspect, but I wanted to reiterate it. And that gets into sort of the adequacy of acceleration and deceleration lanes for ramps as well. Because especially when you've got people who may not be driving as fast as they might want to to get up to the end of a ramp and match freeway speeds because they're concerned about potholes on the ramp, then there's that conflict between their speed and, and the road speed. And if there isn't an adequate acceleration lane, then you, you get people trying to jump on it at a low, at too low a speed too. So that could create issues. And all of which I'm not saying to design everything to make it better for vehicles. But once again, back to that original message of if we make things work better for vehicles on thirty-six, hopefully people aren't bailing on to the, the B and B two corridors as much, which creates all those other issues. So, and that's, like I said, something we definitely heard, heard a lot about from residents for years and years and years. So I think those are the main, the main points I, I wanted to emphasize, you know, just in relation to, to all of that. Councilmember Strong?
I just wanted to add that of the options, Hamlin to me seemed like the best option. I don't think anyone would be thrilled. But when Hamlin was closed for a period of time, it seemed like things still moved. But given Fairview, Snelling, Lexington, Dale, Rice, none of those can be moved. So really it seemed like Hamlin only for the safety of the students and people who are, you know, going to the golf course and stuff. But I certainly wouldn't want to do that without unilaterally making any decisions.
Councilmember Strawn takes all the calls.
By the time it happens, you know, it'll be long.
Can you remind me when Hamlin was closed? I'm wondering.
During the project this last year for the intersection improvement at the light.
Just the spring. Yeah.
There were, there were times when the ramps were closed.
Oh, we'll have data then.
Yeah.
We can look at our big data and understand.
Yep.
And maybe answer that question for people.
Yep.
Well, it is an interesting thing too, because I know that along thirty-six, there is, there's, has been, I don't know if it's still there, signage to say, if you're going to Rosedale, get off at Hamlin. Because I think the intent there was to try to relieve some of the traffic at Fairview for sure and, and maybe Snelling as well, from the westbound traffic. So if you start eliminating that alternative, now you've just pushed people back to where you were trying to eliminate them from. So there's no easy answers, of course, through this whole, this whole area.
I would say that the four-way stop at B.
Yes.
No, it's not B. It's at the frontage road, right behind where it was previously the Department of Education.
Oh, yeah. Oh, Albert.
Has been great improvement. It is still far too fast that people take that corner. And it was a whole winter where we didn't see many of the signs down, but we kind of take bets on it. So it's pretty frequent that people headed south on that jog are going to take out a few signs if it's slippery. But that four-way stop there is a great improvement. So I think that even probably resolves some of the long-term issues that people have talked about.
Great.
I think the biggest thing it did was it helped with people heading westbound on that, that road, whatever it's called, who didn't have to stop before. You know, constantly there were people coming off of thirty-six who didn't really care. And so they, they were, there were a lot of vehicle accidents there. So, and certainly pedestrians, there are just so much of a concern there too. You know, still when people come off thirty-six on that, on that exit, they don't have to stop to turn right. And so there's, there's one of those sort of, you know, conflict points with pedestrians once again. And I know we just went through the improvements to Fairview and, and thirty-six to try to eliminate some of those, those permitted right turns without a stop. And, and hopefully that's helping. But there are a few of those still around in the corridor that need to be, need to be looked at. And as, as noted, a lot of people feel that every red light is, or every stop sign is an opportunity to turn without stopping anyway. So I don't know what we do about that. Anything else from the council?
Thank you.
Thank you again. Oh.
Could I just add one quick thing? So he mentioned the Snelling and B study by HARMAR that's going on kind of concurrently that we, we are leading, but we have funding from the county and the county and the state are on our project management team for that. So we have had engagements over the last couple of weeks. And there is currently a survey out for that right now. I think communications was going to push that out on some of our social media yet this week. So, so there, those are tying together and communicating with each other.
Great. And for our tens of watchers this evening.
Yep. Spread the word.
In the survey, exactly, and tell the neighbors and friends. All right. Thank you again. And we appreciate the foresight in this type of process, you know, and, and we'll try to keep our frustration that it doesn't lead to immediate projects to, to a reasonable level.
Thank you so much.
All right. With that, then that concludes our business items. We do have one additional item on the agenda this evening. We have an item that was a council initiated item from a previous meeting. And per our council rules of procedure, we do, do a pit stop for those items in front of the council prior to formally putting them on an upcoming agenda for guidance from the council. And this was related to the school resource officer matter where we had an opportunity to sign a contract for this school year with the district for school resource officers and elected not to do that on the advice of our attorney. I'll turn order Mr. Tregeon for any introduction that he might like to make on this and then certainly recognize Councilmember Strawn.
No, I don't really have anything in particular. As you, as you mentioned, that we currently do not have a contract to place SROs, student resource officers in the schools, the high school, middle school and the rest of the school district. We've had two in the past couple of years and one at the high school for many, many years. This is really due to the change in state law and the perceived conflict that, that it does have in, in law amongst different people. And so we have decided not to, Chief and I, as well as the city attorney, based on her advice, to not bring that item forward for council consideration this year. And that's been communicated to the city council in the past. I would note that we are not alone in that other cities have made similar decisions. I just heard today Whitebird Lake pulled theirs off and Maple Grove did also today. So there's a lot of concern. I think there is a lot of discussion about it. And I think we have to be careful that we don't get caught up in all that back and forth discussion. I think there are solutions that we're committed to trying to find a way, but we're just not there presently. So currently we are still recommending that they do not be placed in the school.
Thank you for that introduction. And I should note, the, the question before us as a council is firstly, do we place this on an upcoming council agenda? And if so, in what manner or what do we want from the staff or whomever to, to do that? So that's what we're really talking about, not necessarily the issue itself this evening. So with that, Councilmember Strawn, I don't know, but since you have brought this up, if you have anything you'd like to, to say.
Yes, thank you. So as we learned as a council via email on August seventeenth, there was consternation and concern about the changes in the law. And we were, there was the possibility that the SRO contract would not be pursued. I went in checking with City Manager Tregeon, indicated that the contract was approved by the Independent School District six twenty-three and ready to go, but it was the decision. ready to go, but it was the decision of the city manager, the police chief, and the city attorney to not bring that forward. Usually that would be added to the consent agenda for approval for 2324. There's still funding remaining for the 23-year in our city budget. On 8/30, we were told that that contract, that they did not pursue that contract. My understanding with our arrangement with the city is that we allow the city manager to make decisions on contracts that are less than $10,000. And so I was curious how this all, and I was out of town, so I wasn't paying too much attention, but in thinking ahead, now, there is funding in the budget for 2024 available for our third of the cost-sharing arrangement with the school district. But I, my concern is that as we move closer to that time without having an arrangement made, that then the budget money should probably not be set aside for them if there's not a plan to move forward with the SROs as indicated. And once we remove the budget line item, it's unlikely that we'll get it back in the future. We've had conflicting information based on many things happening, and I think we're all in that situation. But my concern is that the decision was not made by the council, and it was not agended to the public. They didn't have an opportunity to weigh in on the situation. And us as electeds of the city have entrusted a more limited responsibility in making that final decision. And so I feel like it should be added to an agenda item where we can fully review all the information, possibly ending up with the same answer. But I feel like that should be a decision that is held by the council in our capacity rather than by the city staff and the city attorney. I do note that we continue to receive additional information from a variety of sources, and I do want to make sure that we take into consideration anything that comes out from our Attorney General, and hopefully that will be our lead legal counsel for the state of Minnesota. But I think we owe our constituents the opportunity to have it agendaed, have them be able to be present for the meeting, have them help decide, and us as the body make an educated decision that includes all of the folks who would be part of that process. And so I would like to propose that it go on to an agenda, a future agenda, so that we can make decisions and realizing that our information seems to be continually changing, and even after we were to make a decision, additional information may become available. That would impact our final decision. I've spoken to Mr. Tregeon, the council, the school board president, and a few other folks in relation to this. It seems like there's a strong interest in having resource officers. There's a lot of unknowns in the process, but I do think it comes down to we are the electeds, and that kind of, a decision of that magnitude should be placed with us.
All right. So the question before the council, well, first of all, are there any questions for Councilmember Strawn from other members of the council? Seeking clarification or anything? The question for the council is, do we place this on a future agenda? And if so, are there other guidance or direction we have either for staff or whatever? I suppose picking a date would be appropriate if that's the case, and then any other feedback in terms of preparing to put that on the agenda. So I'll open it up to the rest of the council first. Oh, and just by way of information, I think our city attorney is out until the 23rd or thereabouts, and so our next meeting is on the 25th.
25th.
Right. So I don't know by then, if we're looking at a time, if that would be enough time for the attorney to be able to get up to speed on whatever new information is out there. So thoughts from the council as to the weather and the when and how if we do? Councilmember.
The reason I see for doing this would be that there are a lot of questions out in the public, and we are the body that they look to represent them. So that would be the reason I would put it on the agenda. I do think there are lots of issues going on there, lots of questions. I talked to Mr. Tregeon about this, and I just think it would be good for clarification for everyone of where we are and why we are where we are.
Other thoughts from councilmembers?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this item has come up. I do agree that this is a thing that is certainly something that's important in our community and important to our youth. But I also understand that at this point, our city staff, including our attorney who looks at this differently than I can in my professional roles outside of being a city council member, at this point has not said that they feel comfortable with how this would affect our, potentially affect our officers and our city. And so I don't want to put this on an agenda item, as an agenda item, until there's more resolution or understanding or change or shifting with this. And that may be coming. Certainly, there is noted by Mr. Strawn, there are things that we keep getting information in from various sources. But at this point, I would not be prepared to bring this up in a way that would feel kind of like we're going to push this forward politically versus trusting that city attorney, our police chief, and our city manager.
There are council thoughts. Councilmember Strawn?
Yeah, there has been a lot of conversations around this. I, too, have talked to our, you know, Pat, our city manager, and looked at this. And I also know that we've hired our city attorney to help us figure out what's best legally for Roseville. And, because I think some of the information that keeps going back and forth gets a bit confused with political reasons versus what's best for Roseville. So I guess I, you know, we've entrusted the chief and the city manager and our attorney to take a look at this. And I guess if our city attorney, who would know more about the legal aspects of how it would affect our city more than I would, I would want to defer to them, and especially since all three of you have, you know, looked at this and became agreement on it. I guess I have no interest in putting it on the agenda unless the attorney comes forth and decides that all this additional information is worth looking at. Otherwise, I think I would want to wait.
I think I will add, too, that I tend to lean in that direction as well. I think it's important to say, though, as I think has already been said, so, not that it wasn't already part of the conversation, I don't know of anybody involved in this who doesn't want the city to ultimately have these student resource officers in the schools. I think we've seen the benefit of that, and I think we've also heard from residents, including through some engagement processes the district did a few years ago, what the benefit of having the school resource officers is, both from the point of view of the principal specifically at the high school at the time, and her experience in Roseville and other districts, and certainly from the point of view of parents. And I also want to be respectful of the differing point of view that I think people in the community also have from that, where there is still a concern, you know, related to school resource officers, and that may relate out of certainly, you know, information and headlines that are out there primarily, most likely, as it relates to other districts and other parts of the country, where perhaps the officers that are involved in those issues and incidents may not be under the same, you know, standards or constraints or modus of operation that we have here, certainly in Roseville and in Minnesota. So, but that being said, certainly those different points of view are out there. I want to be respectful of those. But certainly, once again, I think based on our experience, you know, barring that change to the state law, and I think the uncertainty as to risk to the city is how I would characterize the advice from the attorney that that created in respect to how this particular legislation relates to other existing legislation out there. You know, until our attorney can be comfortable that that risk is mitigated or that something is done to change how the various statutes interact with each other, I'm not sure I'm in a position to put something on an agenda to have a conversation about it if the recommendation from the staff and the attorney is still the same, based on all the information we might have. It feels a little bit like we're trying to do something contrary to the advice of our attorney. And the attorney is not just the staff's attorney, it's also the council's attorney, and so their advice is to the organization of which we're also representatives. So I think until we hear something that says, and I would imagine that if our attorney changed her opinion, then the staff would be setting up to put this on the consent agenda for the council to approve the contract, because that's the normal process. So whether that has to be initiated by the council, you know, at that point, I don't know that it would be, because obviously it would be coming from the staff, and it would hopefully be the support of the attorney and the rest of the folks involved on the staff side of it. So that being said, that's, you know, that's where I'm at in terms of wanting to, you know, look at whether to put this on an agenda coming or not. Councilmember Strawn?
Attorney McHale, does, in your capacity as acting attorney, allow you the ability to execute a contract on behalf of the city of Roseville?
The city attorney's office has no authority to execute a contract on behalf of the city.
That's the city manager and the mayor.
Right. And we have allowed Mr. Tregeon the ability to execute contracts of less than $10,000 without our approval. Is that correct?
I don't want to speak for the attorney, but the rule of the city or the ordinance of the city is that we allow spending authority
Spending authority, yes.
Of the city manager up to $10,000 without those having to be previously approved by the city council. I think by and large, contracts need to be before the city council for approval of whatever value they are, because it's something we have to authorize the city to enter into, is my understanding. Mr. Tregeon, if you want to clarify?
Yeah, I would say that that's correct, that any contract we enter to, we need to get approval by the city council and be brought forward. So that's what you see in consent agendas or regular business items that are brought forward. So for us to enter into any contract with the school district, we would need to bring that forward for city council approval.
And I should just clarify, so a contract to buy something is different than a contract to provide a service. I would just say, probably if there was a contract
Under $10,000.
To just buy something for under $10,000, we wouldn't have to approve it as the city council. Councilmember Strawn?
I think that you're misunderstood, you're, many of you are trying to do what the opposite of what you're hoping to do here. This, in my mind, is whose responsibility it is to either execute or de-execute a contract. So we have, the decision has been made outside of the council to not, to not take on that contract. And I feel like as an elected official, we are the representatives of the city. We should be the ones who have it on our shoulders that make the decision whether or not the contract is to be executed. Probably, based on the voices here, it would, it would end up the same. But I feel like if there's no authority from the attorney to enter into a contract for the city on the behalf of the city, and Mr. Tregeon would need to bring any contract forward, that the decision to terminate a contract or not go through with a contract that had been planned and budgeted for would still be also on the city's, on our responsibility as the elected body. And so I am not, I'm taking it in a different way. And there's been much more talk about, you know, that, yes, this topic is the SRO, but I think we have to look, step back and look at it as, are we, what if it was about something completely different? And Mr. Tregeon decided, no, I don't want to do that. We, is it, I, to me, it's a process. Are we saying, yes, it's okay for you to go ahead and make changes that, without our approval? We're the elected body. We're the people that, and the city and in the, you know, who elected us expect to answer that answer. You know, we answer to them. And so none of the people involved in the decision to terminate the contract are elected body, are elected, and don't have, I don't know, then what's their responsibility to the people who live in Roseville. So to me, it's more about, well, we probably, well, if we had it next Monday, it would probably be the same exact, nothing new would be known. But I'm more concerned about the decision, and Mr. Tregeon and I talked about this today, that this was my concern, is that we have, a decision has been made without us, and if you can't, that we need to be willing to step up and make possibly the same decision. But we need to be able to stand up and own that and make that decision in front of the people and let people have an opportunity to bring their opinions forward on that. So that's my, that's why I bring it forward, and that's why I wanted it to be on the agenda.
It sounds like that the council doesn't have a consensus to put it on a specific agenda. It's always something that can be brought up again, certainly, either by staff or by council. We're not taking a vote, so there isn't the rule about you can't bring something up if you're on the losing side of a vote, because we're not, we're not at that point in this situation. So I think as we know more, we may, you know, that may change where we're at. But I think at this point, just to give an analogy as to the specific, if we pull it away from being a discussion about the SRO contract with the school district, you know, conceivably, an example might be we provide engineering, city engineering services to another municipality. And something that municipality has done or changed about how they do business has created an additional risk to the city if we were to continue that contract to provide engineering services. And so as a result of that, the city manager in consultation with the attorney and perhaps staff made the determination not to renew a contract with another city to provide those engineering services. I don't know that that would necessarily be something that would have to come before the city council for our authorization to not enter into that contract necessarily. There could be a whole host of legal advice related to that. I was just trying to think of an analogy that wasn't a school resource officer. But I'd have to believe that there are constantly situations where the city has the opportunity to enter into a contract to do something, and it isn't brought forward by the staff, because the staff doesn't feel it's appropriate for the city to do that. And I think that it isn't necessarily the case that every single situation where the staff doesn't recommend doing something, they still need to bring it to the city council for us to ratify that decision not to do something, is exactly the right interpretation of the roles. So that's just off the top of my head thinking in relation to that and why I'm not so terribly concerned. But certainly, this is a topic that's a little more of intense interest to people, and so I can understand why it raises that extra level of question or concern. But I think the process that we have in place seems to be appropriate and seems to have been followed in an appropriate manner from my perspective. It doesn't sound like we're going to be putting this on, at least from a council-initiated point of view, on a future agenda unless I'm misinterpreting things. But I think, and I'll re-emphasize what I said at the beginning, which is I don't believe anybody in this process is necessarily pleased that we don't have school resources officers, unless, except for perhaps folks that didn't want them in the first place. But I think the officers themselves, the management of the department, the management of the city, and large portions of the community understand and appreciate the benefit of having those officers. And I think we all want to get to a point where that can happen. I think that, you know, this aspect of having a legal piece of advice that's based, you know, that our decision as a city is based on, it just puts us in a, I'll say, in addition to the fact that there's a lot of politics outside this organization that's pushing in very, various different directions on it, I think that's, that just, those external factors tend to, tend to put us in a tough position sometimes, too. But at this point, and I'm certainly not suggesting that anybody here is acting either only or primarily on the basis of anything like that or at all on that basis. So I want to be clear about that. But I think perhaps I've said enough on this, and we have the apparent direction from the council, and to the extent that we need to talk about this again, it will certainly be, we'll have opportunities, and opportunities will avail themselves. With that, unless there's anything else, I believe the only other items we have are a future agenda review. So I'll turn over Mr. Tregeon to give us an update on upcoming agendas.
And I've not seen it. I'll turn this way. So our next meeting is September 25. We primarily have the, looking at the preliminary budget and levy for the city and the EDA, as we referenced earlier. As I mentioned, I will try to include what I can as part of that presentation and recommendation about the information from the class and comp study. As I mentioned earlier, we're still getting those numbers together here, so I'm not sure I'm going to have a complete picture that can give you any certitude about
So I'm not sure I'm going to have a complete picture that can give you any certitude about where to maybe land on, on the 25th. As we all know, this is the not to exceed, so we can go down, not up. So that might give us the, the window of opportunity to continue to talk about it and still potentially reduce it as we move forward, the levy and the budget. On October 9th, we do have a series of liquor compliance failures, I believe at seven, and several tobacco violations. So we'll be going through those, that'll take some time to go through. But we also want to have a, a, a presentation and update and discussion about the classification and compensation update on the 9th. On the 16th, we have a joint meeting. This is kind of our regularly scheduled meeting with a planning commission to talk about what they've been working on and what they would like to work on in the future, envision Roseville update. We also want to start discussing the future of Rosefest, not the future of Rosefest, I shouldn't say it that way, how Rosefest may evolve over time. And there are just some ideas that we're beginning to talk about, but certainly want to talk to the city council about those potential changes and some feedback and some direction. As well as there are some upgrades to Rosebrook Park that we want to start planning for. And before we start engaging with the neighborhood, we want to at least introduce some concepts to the city council so you are aware, certainly get any feedback. It's going to be a process that's going to be driven by the community, but we certainly want to get you in the loop on that, what's being proposed. Then on the 22nd, we do have several items, short-term rentals, sacred settlement ordinance, the reasonable accommodation ordinance. And, trying to move that on the screen. And then we have several trail projects, the Wagner Path, Tamarack Path, and Twin Lakes Pathway Project Phase Two. We want to discuss all those and make some decisions regarding those. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we'd like to hopefully approve the classification and compensation plan, meaning what's the implementation? That certainly has a budget impact, but also just from logistics, we need to understand what we're implementing so we have things ready to go at, at the start of the year. October is a busy month for HR with open enrollment, so we want to make sure we get some decisions made and then so we can move forward. And that is the consent, not the consent agenda, the future agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Tregeon. Other questions from the council on future agenda items? Councilmember Strong.
Given our new THC cannabis licensing, will we expect the compliance failures moving forward?
Hard to say.
We should never expect failures, right? You know, there's such a long laundry list now for places that sell tobacco, just liquor, and now THC. We have to sort out how we're doing compliance checks. Are we doing them all at once? Are we doing them separately?
Well, I'm just thinking that you may run into some of them when you're doing liquor or tobacco. You may run into someone who is not licensed as, as they are selling.
Yeah, certainly if they're not licensed, that's, that's a significant issue that we can deal with directly, whether or not they're selling properly to underage. We have to kind of
Okay.
Be, you know, more deliberate about that. But yes, I think that might be in the future. I think you're right.
Other questions about upcoming agendas or liaison reports or announcements from councilmembers?
This Thursday, NYFS will be having their open house, and it'll be in Badness Heights this time, at the Community Center. And it is the kickoff of their new strategic plan and going through new program.
And that's Wednesday?
Wednesday at 4:30 to 6:30.
Right, at the Badness Commons?
Yeah.
Other communications, announcements, future agenda items? Councilmember Atten? Otherwise, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Graff, second by Councilmember Schroder to adjourn. No discussion on a motion to adjourn. Mr. Tregeon, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Graff.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Schroder.
Aye.
Councilmember Atten.
Aye.
Mayor O.
Aye. If that motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned at 7:57. Thank you, everyone.